Thank you for coming. First, I would like to thank Principal Off and her staff for welcoming us here this evening. And now, actually Director Leone, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? So as we, we have a few housekeeping things to take care of. Do we have any members of the media here? That we would like you to introduce yourself, members of the media? Okay. And just reminding you to please mute your cell phones. And if you were interested in speaking tonight during public participation, please fill out a card over here by the door. And board members, please remember to turn your mic on when you speak and turn it off when you're finished. So we're going to start out, we're going to have two principals make their presentations today. We're going to have the Sunny Slope Principal Dan Indicott, but we're going to start out with Jolene Principal Nikki Off.
Welcome. Can you hear me? I did. Is that better? Is that better? Yeah, there you go, Matt, there you go. Welcome, everybody. We're excited for the large crowd tonight here at Jolene. It's going to be a great meeting, lots of things to celebrate, people to celebrate, students, staff, and the hard work that's happening here at Jolene. We have a presentation for you tonight. The board was here for a meeting in just June, it was just June. So I feel like it was only about three meetings ago that we were here when on school site. So some of the information that we have is some updated information about our goals and things that we're working on for this year and just kind of share what we're up to here at Jolene. So welcome. So as you all know, and we often refer to our strategic plan, that though, this is the driving document that helps us to keep all students at the center of the work that we do every day at school. Decisions that we make, systems that we create, that we use to place students in classes, to support students while they're here, are all driven by the strategic plan. And as you can guess, appropriate and timely instruction, of course, is a huge focus for us here at Jolene. But I would also, as we move through the next couple of slides, I also want to really press on the fact that we're working on leadership development here in our building. Because while I am the instructional leader here, I cannot do that lift on my own. And I require and need the support and the knowledge of our department leaders who help me to plan professional development that is impactful for all of our teachers and therefore all of our students. So we have spent a lot of time working on leadership development. I just want to keep that up at the forefront as we move through. So our Jolene vision for student learning. At Joseph Lane Middle School, students will be members of a safe, positive, and inclusive school community where everyone is celebrated, involved, and has a sense of belonging. Students will take risks, think critically, collaborate, and make connections with meaningful, relevant content. They will drive their learning and persevere through challenges. Students will be empowered to become lifelong learners and prepared with the academic and social skill and emotional skills needed to contribute to their communities. And this school vision is a living document for us as we are thinking about and planning professional development and we are choosing articles to share, papers to share, strategies to work with staff. We're always reflecting back and thinking, how does this match? Where do we see this in this vision? Because if it's not there, then it's not what we said that we were going to be working on together as a team. So in the June, we shared preliminary data, which did not change much from then to now. In the area of literacy here at Jolene, we had 51% of our students who met or exceeded the state test on OSAS. For math, we were at 31%, which was, which was a very small increase for us, but it was a move in the right direction. And our third goal was around on the path to graduation. Our focus was attendance. And we increased to 70% of our students who are regular attenders at Jolene. Our goal was 70%, which was, which was an increase of 4%. And we met that goal, which we were very excited about. So on the next slide, we'll talk about our, our next year's goals, or actually this year's goals. So we're working really hard to improve our students who are exceeding in literacy up to 60% by the spring of 2025. In math, we're looking for a nine-point increase of 40% who are meeting or exceeding the standards. And our path to graduation or attendance goal, we're wanting to increase that regular attendance rate to 75%. And it's a lot, a lot of work to do. And the next few slides will tell us how we're going to do it. There are some repeating information, so I won't, I'm not going to read all of these slides. But we're using our 5D instructional framework to guide our professional development. We are really focusing on the instruction being targeted at grade level standards. So as we are working on engagement strategies to increase engagement for students and also as a form of assessment for learning, we can ask really great questions and have students engaged in talking about what they're understanding about the content. But if it is not pointed at and focused on the standard for that grade level, then it is, it is work for nothing. So it is a lot of work on our staff to make sure that the questions that they are asking at the right moment during their lessons are hitting those standards in order to make sure that we are moving students in the right direction. This also is met through intentional planning by all of our staff. And this is not just in math and language arts. We're expecting this also in all of our elective courses that students have, that teachers have the standard in mind. They know where they're going and they're intentionally planning for the places within the lesson where they're going to ask those questions that get students thinking deeply about the content that they are presenting. And they're talking in academic language that is content specific. And not only that, but showing their understanding. So teachers know what is the next instructional move I need to make for this, this group of students. Our PD system is quite elaborate. We have an instructional leadership team who meets about every six weeks, sometimes more often than that, to plan our sessions. We have whole group sessions, we have department leader meetings, we have department meetings. So the department leader meetings where we meet, talk about the professional development, and then rehearse it. Because you can be very good at knowing the content and knowing what the message that you're wanting your teachers to hear. But unless you have practiced how that's going to be presented, it may not be as effective as you would like. And the same is true for teachers who are then presenting lessons with new strategies that we're asking for them. Let's practice what that sounds like in the moment with each other before we move in front of students to do that same work. And that is happening in both literacy and math, so I won't reread all of that. In the math area of math, we do have two additional things we're working on. We have a math studio where our middle school teams are getting together. And Fremont is hosting the math studio, but all of our math teachers are in the same room. They're thinking about the intentional planning, exactly what we were just talking about. What are the engagement strategies we're going to use? What are the questions we're going to ask? What are the strategies that we want to employ as teachers to get at student engagement? And then we go into classrooms and see it in action. And we identify when this teacher made this move, this is what students do. So we can say, that is exactly what I need to be doing in my room. And what's the lesson that I'm doing tomorrow look like? And how can I be ready for that? Our sustainability project supports our math department leaders as they also plan PD around all of that same information. I think that the last part is around the path to graduation and attendance. And our teachers are the ones that really help us to improve attendance. Classrooms have to be a place where students feel safe, they feel heard, they have a sense of belonging. They feel like they're, they can adequately do the tasks in front of them. And our teachers are the driving force in that. So we want to make sure that our schools are welcoming. And so there are commitments that we made as teachers about agreements that we were going to honor. Things like being in the hallway to make sure we're greeting students as they're coming in the door. Because we want students to feel safe, that every room has a consistent routine and protocol that when you come in, you're going to be greeted. Because when things are predictable and there are routines, then people feel safe. When you are greeted, when you, someone says your name, when you are, have welcoming activities or connecting activities in the classroom, that fosters a sense of belonging. And when students feel safe and they feel like they are emotionally connected and are belonging, then they are ready to learn. So those are the things that we're working on here. And I think that might be it. And that's it. That's what we do here and we love it. We are working hard, it is a heavy lift. And if you take a look at our PD calendar, it is full. And we can tell you what we're doing between now and March because we have a plan. And I am super excited to stand here next year and show you how fantastic our scores look. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That, that was great, very informative, and I like what you're doing. Any comments or questions from other board members?
Ms. Off, I was just wondering, do you use your professional development meetings to talk about benchmarks to see how you're doing throughout this process between now and achieving the goal?
We do. So we have a couple of different systems that we use to do that. Our district, we administer the maths assessment three times a year. So at the end of January, we will be getting the, our second round of results. And we'll be taking a look at how are students growing? That helps us to determine, are we, do we have students that need additional support classes? Do we have students that need moved out of their support classes because they have made enough gains that they're now ready for an additional elective? Do we have students who are in our special education programs who may not need as much support because they have increased their academic skills so much that we can pull back just a little bit more? And with our goal being that, of course, they work us out of that job, right? That we are not having to support them in the special education world because they are just thriving in the Gen Ed setting. So that's one way. Second, in, within our departments, departments decide on and agree upon a goal that they then collect data around throughout the year. So the last number of years, we've been focusing really hard on the area of writing. So student work samples will be brought to those meetings where they're taking a look at how are students performing on this rubric? And what do we need to attack next in order to keep kids moving up on the rubric? So those two examples, there are many others, but those are the two.
Thank you.
You very much. Thank you, Principal Off, that was great.
Thank you.
And then we have Principal Indicott from Sunny Slope, he's going to make his presentation.
Now it's green. Is that better? Usually my voice doesn't have a problem being heard. But one, as principal, we are always excited to be here in front of you. It's a joy for us to present to you and to share about our school and to share what we're doing. We look forward to this time and understand that time constraints to keep your meeting flowing. I've been expressly told to keep this meeting flowing and not to talk too much. But I will tell you, at the slope, we've been busy. And if you look at our, our logo there, starting with the sun, it's because we shine at the slope, right? We're safe, we're helpful, we're involved, we're nice, and we're empathetic, we care about others. Excellent. So you've heard all of us, we talk about the strategic plan. And I'm telling you, it's the core of what we do in every building and everything what we do. It's what we consistently strive to connect those four pillars, those four tenants into our daily work. The strategic plan also aligns with our frameworks, both the 5D and the Castle Framework, to move our kiddos into being students. It's really hard to take a kiddo unless they're regulated into being a student and having them actually learn those academic concepts we're working for. So those both work in alignment. On here, I'd like to say you can't see one of them, but we also have Jessie and we have Sadie Kay as the two pictures. So I made that, make that known because these are people, these are kids. We, we know every kid and every kid is valued in our school. So I wanted to point those out that those are Sunny Slope students and both Jessie and Sadie Kay shine for us, that's for sure. Next slide. So we do have our vision for learning at Sunny Slope. It's a place where students shine, we're safe, we're helpful, we're involved, we're nice and empathetic, empowering all to grow to their full potential to become lifelong learners and high school graduates. So we want to empower our students to have as many opportunities as possible. That's what we're here to provide, especially at the elementary schools, to give them a chance to grow, to reach when they get to sixth grade that they have lots of opportunities. With our district's P20 pathways, it is awesome as a principal because their potential is limitless. We get to talk about, and I honestly get to say, hey, have you ever thought about this? Is this something you could do? And I can pull out the list because I have it here in front of me. And it, I mean, it's multiple pages when you print it out. And you get to talk to kids and they're like, oh, well, that'd be kind of cool. So to even create that excitement at the elementary level is pretty, pretty special for me. From medical to military, from college to career. You know, we want to present students that the current list is just awe inspiring. We truly believe and work with every effort to promote our students to their next school in a position to take full advantage of these resources that we have in place as a district. So we really like that. Next slide. All right, so you can see that's Nicole there. I will tell you, probably one of the best smiles I've seen in elementary school is Nicole. But our school family, and it's not me, it is the, the school staff and the family has worked hard. And we grew in every metric this last year. So not every goal was met and we will work through those numbers, but we continue to set high expectations. Not, we don't look for small growth, we look for large growth. And I, I, I am more of a baseball fan when you go for the home run, not the single base. I want, I want to have high growth because these kids deserve that. And we continue to set those expectations. So in literacy, we grew five points from last year. In math, we grew eight points. And in attendance, we grew six points. So we had solid growth across all. We hit our growth for math and surpassed it. And we came close both on literacy and our attendance. When we look at how this is goal number three, we actually even shifted this year to put goal number three as goal number one. Because it's really hard to teach literacy and math if the students aren't in their seats, right? So we really work on that goal and pathway to graduation is getting kids there. And I will tell you, when we get to our next slide, please. Our current goals, we're doing well at that, we're working hard towards it. We have projected to have continued growth. We have Michael there and you can't see Orion, well, you can on this screen, Orion. So we have a first grade and a fourth grade student in there. So we're working with our literacy coaches on ELA. Our goal is another five-point increase to 40%. That's going to put us right with the state average, very close. Our OSAS, we're actually, I think, above the state average, but we're looking for a five-point increase to 40 on that. And we're working with teacher leaders, with our TNL department, with our curriculum and with TDG. And then our contenders, we're looking to be 75%. Back when I received the principalship of, right as COVID was hitting, I looked at those numbers and it's really striking to see where we were as a district, where we were as a state, and where we were at Sunny Slope. And you know, a percentage of students there was around 80%. And how it dipped and to move that back. So we're looking at 75. I can tell you right now, today, I didn't want a monkey with the slides, I didn't, you know, but there, we're at, we're at 79.92. So we're, we're really doing well there. But we set up structures with PBS and, and principals that communicate to our students, staff, families, and they've been instrumental. So for our goals today, part of our professional learning today was, I have goals there, there, you can see them, my staff. I open up every, every professional learning opportunity with them. But our staff shared their goals. Their goals were written per grade level. And they got to share that every teacher is working to increase language arts and math. And the fun thing is, we looked at it and say, there, the goals are written for all students. They're written for the high learners, they're written for the low learners, they're written for those middle. So when you talk about the triangle, you talk about strategic or intensive or benchmark students, we were able to shell, share every grade level set of goals for English and language arts today. And it was powerful that we were able to communicate that to ourselves. And we're communicating that out to the public, too. We feel it's important that everybody's part of that goal process. We have them for 17 and a half hours a day, or six and a half hours a day. That means families have them for 17 and a half. I'm working on that funding. I'm ready for it, but. But there, there you go. When we plan to meet our goals, we have different parts, next slide, I'm sorry. So you know, where their supports are both intrinsic and extrinsic, we review and revise data. So looking at that and compared to the last question, Mr. Cubic, Director Cubic asked, we are constantly looking, and we don't just look and say, hey, how are our students doing? We look at our different students in different tiers. Our strategic, or our benchmark students get three different data points per year in the fall, into winter, into spring. Our students that need more support, they're monitored a little more. So we're actually looking at that, some groups of students in some certain areas. When we look at specific skills, we're actually looking at how are they growing every two weeks? To see what do we need to do to make, make that instruction better? How do we change it? To affirm what we're doing is working well? And so we're really excited about those. So you guys have those in your packets. I'm not going to, I'm not a slide reader, so, but they're there for you. But we do appreciate the, the next slide. That is Kenley, Emma, and Peyton there on our slide. So, but we appreciate your dedication and definitely would love to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions?
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you, Director Cubic.
How are the new security improvements for your school working?
I think, you know, today we had a great fire drill and a lockdown drill. So trying to implement the different systems that we have, from a legacy fire, you know, system to a new Smeed system, which is an intercom, to the Raptor, which is an app-based. So I think they're working, trying to get them all in tangent and working together is definitely just a cool thing to, to get better at. And then we're looking at different spaces, like having buckets in classrooms for emergencies and lockdowns. Well, what spaces really need those? At first, we were like, well, every classroom does. But what happens for kids on recess? And they get pulled into a library or in a cafeteria? Do I need five buckets for my cafeteria? Do I need five buckets for my gym? So going through some of those, what we got today, and we're going to have a meeting to debrief about that on Friday morning, is how do we get better, right? The goal isn't just to be perfect or an ideal state. The, the idea is to know where you're at and work to have improvements on that. And I think those new, they're still new to us, these improvements. And how are we using them, getting better, helping our community through it? You know, I come from a position of customer service in, in my past life. And really making sure that that wall, that barrier is not a customer service implement. We want people in our schools, we want communities in that. And how do we work with them, understanding that, hey, things are different. When you pick up your kid, it's going to be a little different. And we want to work with them and have them grow along with us.
Very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the RHS Student Leadership Report. Spencer Bingham was supposed to be here, but evidently he's at a football banquet. But we have the wonderful Sylvia Ekman, who's really tearing it up in cross-country. Awards like crazy, we're very proud of her. And we have Anan Kolberg. Take it away, ladies.
Thanks for having us. I think everyone who spoke has said it's super fun to have a bunch of people here tonight. I think at RHS, we were able to have a long weekend from conferences. I know for some people that meant athletic competitions. We had swimmers up in Eugene. We were able to run it state. And then for some people, it meant traveling. But we're finally getting back into the swing of things today. And then a bunch of programs on campus. We also had at the end of our quarter, so academically, we're in a transition. And then also, we have programs doing tryouts next week and then awards banquets. And then also everyone's trying to recruit. There's always, you can always get more people in your program and there's so many wonderful kids on campus. So, yeah. And then for leadership, I think the main event that we've been thinking about was homecoming. And I think that went super well. We were able to sell out of tickets for the dance. And then our homecoming court, we started a new tradition and they raised over $800 in coins in like three days or four for the local cancer center. And then we just saw a bunch of students and teachers involved on campus. And it's always fun, just have something extra that gets people showing up. And then, as always, the week would have been impossible without the support of so many parent volunteers and staff members. I can't even count how many times we emailed Mrs. Labon for stuff or Marcy, our athletic secretary. She's always helping us out, there's so many people. And then, looking forward, we're looking forward to planning winter week. And then we're also incorporating a new winter dance that'll come for students as they come back from winter break. So something also just to get people to show up and then involved. And then, I think I already mentioned, we had parent conferences last week and we were able to have a bunch of leadership students and then link crew members and all the students out there, helping direct parents and students and then also showing them around. And then we were able to close our first cycle of club grants this year. And I think we had at least eight programs on campus. They all sent in applications. And I think something super special out of this is it's a grant where the student is applying. So all of the stuff is coming for the club grants is student directed, which is super fun. And then pass it off to Anan for sports.
Alrighty, so we, this week, or next week, excuse me, basketball try, tryouts are starting. And then the band closed their performance season with a successful Platinum Arrow performance. In addition to this, they also performed at the Festival of Bands at Otten Stadium at the beginning of the month and set a new school record for the highest score out of competition. The girls soccer and volleyball teams both performed in the first rounds of playoff games. Senior nights were really successful for sports, thanks to the support of all the parents and coaches. And then for cross-country, we had a couple of all-state or all-conference athletes. Brianna Smith, Riley McLaughlin, Roman Leighton, Joe Latham, and Sylvia Ekman. And then for our girls soccer, we also had some all-conference athletes. Ryan Bustamante, Faith Gaines, Callie Richards, and Maddie Snyder. We also had a couple of football players that were also named all-conference athletes this weekend. And addition to this, we have wrestlers are starting their regular season next week. And our football team finished out their season with a win against South Eugene to create their winning record this year.
Fun. Um, I think you can also tell, we have banquets going on this week. So a bunch of students are walking around with new varsity letters or something like that, which is super fun. And looking at academically, students are signing up for AP tests and the UCC winter term. I think that's super exciting for some students, a little daunting for others, but I think that's super great to start early. And then our Vietnam history class was able to partner with the disabled American veterans to make a tribute in front of the high school. And they raised over $3,600 to support local veterans and display some flags. And then also with Veterans Day festivities, our band program played in the parade this weekend. And I think that was their official last performance. I know some people were like, I gotta wash my uniform before I turn it in. And then our Astra programs were also able to walk in the parade and throw some candy at people, which I think that's a good way to spend the weekend. You can also stop by the high school library right now if you want to visit the book fair. It's always a good time, get some good pencils. And then the HOSA Club, which is our Future Health Professionals Program, is restarting on the RHS campus, students who are interested in going in the medical field. And then our U-Dub program was able to volunteer at Make a Difference Day Douglas County and worked on school improvement at For Growth. Super fun. And then our FBLA and FCCLA clubs are currently collaborating on a big sale to fundraise for their respective clubs. And then our FCCLA program is also doing a food drive. And that'll be going on, on campus throughout, through the month of December, I think, for winter break. And then other programs, our drama program is always busy. I think they're building their sets these past couple of weekends. And then they were also able to host a first of its kind, like movie night fundraiser alongside our Orange R program. So everyone's busy, I think we're excited for the next couple of months. And yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you, that was a wonderful report. And. Anan and Sylvia, we as a board just want to look you right in the eye and say, we're so proud of you guys. We really are, so great report, thank you so much. We're going to move on to our student and staff resignation. Please don't resign, please don't resign. We're thrilled to recognize students and staff and their schools for its outstanding achievement in moving our strategic plan forward. And Director Hammerson is going to be doing the student recognition.
Mic check, mic check. So I've never seen such a big crowd for a resignation, that's crazy. So the moment everyone's been waiting for. Just for housekeeping, when I call out a student's name, if the family of the student and all staff from the student's school could come up with a student to accept the award, we will get a picture with the student at the end of, end of the presentation. And then at the end of all the presentations, if we could get all four students to come up and take a picture with the board director so we can post it on social media, is that what?
Yeah, so they, they can.
For the record.
They can have it, copy of it, and put it on the refrigerator.
Cool. So the, the first student is Liam Basso Benson, fifth grade, Sunny Slope Elementary School. So I think you guys are gonna have to fill the whole entire area of the U. Alrighty. Liam is one of Sunny Slope's biggest hearts. Liam has attended Sunny Slope every, every year since kindergarten. His smile brings joy to everyone who knows him. Progress for students is a reward for school families to witness. Sunny Slope has seen Liam grow up, get tall and make gains that have created the remarkable student we see today. Liam is one of Sunny Slope's finest and he will be missed as he moves to middle school. Pizza in the cafeteria will never be the same without Liam Basso Benson leading the line for cheese pizza. Congratulations, Liam. Alrighty, our next student is Madison Moss, eighth grade, Joseph Lane Middle School. Alrighty. According to social studies teacher Jason Baker, in the short time Madison has been in his room, she has established herself as a hardworking student who is a leader amongst her friends. Jason can always count on Madison to be focused on the task at hand and she looks to help others around her. Madison is determined to do her very best on every assignment and takes the extra time to make sure the quality of her work is superior. Our teacher Eric Olson says Madison is a fantastically mature and centered individual. She is kind and friendly with all those whom she interacts. Although it is early in the year, she has shown some exceptional creativity and artistic talent. Math teacher Alexa Scroggins says Maddie is a ray of sunshine every day she comes to class. She is always willing to help others and is kind to everyone around her. Alexa always looks forward to seeing Maddie and her excitement over little things. Congratulations, Madison. Alright, our next one is Carter Koster, 10th grade, Roseburg High School. Oh, and I gotta thank Mike for being Vanna White for me tonight. Carter is the sophomore class representative and a quiet leader by example. He is involved, asks others how they need help, is willing to challenge himself and has a positive attitude while doing it all. A talented artist skilled in both realistic and abstract styles. He's also an accomplished bowler and recently won a tournament in Cottage Grove. Academically, he excels in math, 10 honors, where he is known for his positivity, respectfulness and valuable contributions to group discussions. His cooperative, helpful and polite nature makes him a joy to have in class. And he demonstrates a strong photo, focus, motivation and commitment to excellence in everything he does. His growth as a student this year has been impressive and greatly appreciated. Congratulations, Carter. Yeah, Roseburg High School, you're staying there, yeah. Alright, our next is Owen Miller, 12th grade, Roseburg High School. Owen is a enthusiastic, high achieving, high achieving senior who is consist, who consistently contributes positively to his classes and extracurriculars. Known for his eagerness to learn and share ideas, Owen is always well-prepared and engaged, making him a valuable class participant. He excels academically, taking advanced courses and maintaining high grades. Beyond academics, Owen is a dedicated member of the swim team. I was a swim team captain at my school. Sorry, I had to plug myself there. The, the National Honor Society, I didn't do that. And serves as ASB treasurer in leadership class. In this role, he demonstrates exceptional responsibility, handling the leadership budget and working closely with staff, earning trust for his accountability and confidentiality. Owen's upbeat and positive attitude makes him a joy to be around. And he brings energy and commitment to advanced fitness in calculus classes, where he actively supports and motivates his peers. Owen's conscientious approach to his studies, his genuine curiosity and his drive to improve daily showcase, his drive to improve daily showcase his outstanding character. His teachers feel lucky to have him as a student and appreciate the positive impact he has on his classmates. Congratulations, Owen.
And now we have Robin Bath Rosenfeld, science teacher from Jolene Middle School. Robin is Jolene's science department teacher leader and teaches sixth and eighth grade science. She works to create a culture of learning in the building for both students and staff. She is an outstanding teacher, full of knowledge and exciting ideas to bring to students. She is super organized and goes above and beyond in collaborating with her colleagues. Robert is known for always sharing ideas with the best of the, with the rest of the science team. She organizes the team's meetings and is efficient when running those. She creates awesome experiments with her students in both grades. Fellow staff appreciate all the help she offers when they have questions or concerns about something. Now her crystal apple says, in my science teacher era, but it is spelled really funny and I think it has something to do with sciency stuff. So I'm sure she gets it, I don't. So congratulations, Robin. And Jolene people, you may wanna stay up here. Because now we have Kristi Norton, food service. Kristi is a beautiful, caring person who loves all of Jolene's students and goes out of her way to brighten their day, make them smile and be there if they need anything. Her heart of gold and positive attitude make her a perfect recipient of the Crystal Apple Award. Kristi goes above and beyond her duties as a lunch lady, welcoming students with a friendly smile and a warm hug. Kristi is passionate about school nutrition. Her focus is always on the students and ensuring they receive a delicious meal every day. She is the ultimate team player and steps up to any challenge, working tirelessly, tirelessly to achieve her goals. Kristi works hard to make a connection with all students, often seeking out those who lack connections with other students. She supports them as students and as humans, recognizing their strengths and creating their, celebrating their successes. And her apple says, thanks for helping every student feel valued and important. Congratulations, Kristi. Thank you. Congratulations. And next we have from Sunny Slope Elementary, Chris Kelso, PE teacher. Hey, come on Sunny Slope people. This is awesome. This is great. It's awesome. So Chris has done it all. She, I'm, I'm just reading what you're saying. She epitomizes the nature of education and going above and beyond. Chris is a committed and compassionate educator who has classroom roots that are demonstrated in her inclusiveness for all students. Working with PE standards, Chris works with students, creating motivating activities that focus on body movement, balance and effort. This is done with engagement principles that get all students working hard. Chris's students know pace, participation, attitude, cooperation and effort. And Chris leads this example. Sunny Slope celebrates Chris as one of the school's best. And her apple says, dedicated, encouraging, outstanding. Congratulations, Chris. And Sunny Slope staff, you may wanna stay up for our next one, is Tracy Callis Custodian. In the calm, after students depart, Tracy goes to work. This is done every day without hesitation. Start over. In the calm, after students depart, Tracy goes to work. This is done every day without any hesitation. Tracy shows quiet leadership with her dedication to Sunny Slope. She works tirelessly to get the building into shape, keep it looking great and is relentless in her pursuit of making it better than new. Tracy is quiet and would not want any attention. She's a true servant leader in her practice of caring for the school family with straightforward dedication. Thank you, Tracy. And her crystal apple says, steps up behind the scenes every day. Congratulations, Tracy. Thank you. And I will say, we're gonna take a short break, but all award winners, if you wanna stay up front, we'll have a board, a picture with the board. If you're not wanting to remain for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to leave. If you're celebrating, you may wanna kinda step out down the hall so it doesn't interrupt the rest of the meeting. Thank you for coming. If you're celebrating, you may want to kind of step out down the hall so it doesn't interrupt the rest of the meeting. Thank you for coming. So we are now going to continue with the business portion of our meeting. I just want to check to see if there's anyone that wants to participate in public participation. By by filling out a card or by letting Michelle know online. But it does not appear that we have anyone interested in that. So we're going to move along. Jared is going to give us the review of the agenda and communications to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. In terms of the agenda review, we have added item eight. And that will come under report, under the report section about the student health survey. That's item number seven, excuse me. We also, just as an FYI, we had on the initial publication. The approval or the item of the facility's use, our facilities report. That's been moved to the December 11th, given the fact that report came to the board just recently to allow you enough time to read it. So those two items. Have been updated and reflected in the agenda as you see it. Other than that, in terms of communications, appreciate everybody being here tonight. And also want to welcome Director Kermitz, who's joining online. A little under the weather, but I appreciate how our board steps up even under the weather on Zoom to join us tonight. So thank you.
You. We're moving on now to the consent agenda. It's in pages one through thirty eight in your packet, which you have already had a chance to review. It includes recommendation for employment as always surplus items listing, but we also have gifts. To the district and I just want to say thank you to Ralph Kikekendall, Mark and Heather Kohi. Cascade Community Credit Union and Theron Pike for their generosity to the Roseburg Public Schools. So would anyone entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as approved?
Vote for approval of consent agenda.
I second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, against? Passes. We do have the OSBA item number two is the Board of Directors, position number nine, which is Douglas, the Douglas slash South Coast Region. On August twenty eighth of twenty twenty four, the RPS Board of Directors officially officially nominated Director Steve Jamerson. For the Douglas South Coast Region of the Board of Directors. So districts throughout Oregon will be voting on candidates for their regions. Tonight, we have the opportunity to vote for our very own candidate, Steve Jamerson. We wish to recognize and thank Director Jamerson for his willingness to be considered for our regional position. We have every confidence that if selected, Steve will represent us well by serving with professionalism, honesty, and integrity. I would entertain a motion to approve Director Steve Jamerson as our candidate for OSBA Board of Directors, position number nine.
I motion to approve to nominate Director Steve Jamerson as our OSBA Board of Directors, position number nine.
Great. Do we have a second? We have a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I'm going to abstain. Conflict of interest.
Now we're moving on to item three, a student investment account, the SIA final report. Twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And the twenty-three twenty-four integrated programs annual report. Assistant Superintendent Michelle Neen, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hold this up here. Okay, as. Madam Chair said, this is our the yearly report that we are required to do for the student investment account. For the twenty-three twenty-four school year as well as the required annual report for our integrated programs. And starting with our students' investment account, the Student Success Act was passed by the Oregon Legislature in May of two thousand and nineteen. The Student Success Act is divided into three key accounts, the student investment account, early learning account. And the statewide education initiatives account. School districts in Oregon apply for non-competitive grants to receive funding from the student investment account, the SIA account. This is the final student investment account report for the twenty-three twenty-four school year. Our SIA funds come from the CAT tax. That was passed in two thousand and eighteen. And these are the two stated purposes for the funds distributed under the student investment account. Meet students' mental or behavioral health needs and increase academic treatment for students, including reducing academic disparities. For economically disadvantaged students, students from racial or ethnic groups that have historically experienced academic disparities. Our students with disabilities, English language learners, foster children, and also homeless children. Our district's plan strategies, there are four strategies in our SIA plan. They are all centered around our strategic plan. Strategy one is to create a culture of safety and respect for all our students and adults. And strategy two, ensure instructional materials and tasks are appropriately challenging and supportive for all of our students. Are aligned with content area standards and are culturally and academically relevant. Strategy three, establish systems and interventions to identify and remove barriers to graduation for all students. And strategy four, ensure educators and families have the tools to support academic success for every student. Our SIA grant for the twenty-three twenty-four school year was a little over five point two million dollars. The four key areas that we have to invest in under the SIA plan are class size, well-rounded education, instructional time, and health and safety. These are our investments for the twenty-three twenty-four school year. We purchased books to grow our PK twelve classroom libraries, so all of our students have access to books in the classroom. And we paid for five special education teachers plus the three additional days for our sped teachers in the district. Twenty-five special education instructional assistants and four elementary teachers to reduce class sizes. And in addition, we added six, we pay for six middle school teachers to expand our elective CTE options for students. And we have two middle school teachers on special assignments, which are TOSSAs that assist our principals. With behavior as well as providing professional development in our middle schools. We purchased the ERLA Independent Reading Level Assessment and the ERLA materials for nine elementary schools. This aligns with our district literacy plan and supports our core reading materials in the elementary schools. And we also ensure access to before and after school programs, electives, and extracurricular activities. And we eliminate fees for all students to participate in activities in our district. Our social emotional learning coordinator is our teaching and learning coordinator, and that is Mindy Indicott. And she, along with our social emotional learning specialists, which this year is Sean and Graff. There are making sure our students have access to the care and support that they need to. Engage in the classroom and engage with their academics in order to and also engage them to come to school. We have our two school psychologists. We now have seven school psychologists. We are been fully staffed for the last two years. That's been an area that's taken us a little while, but we are happily fully staffed. In addition, we pay extra duty pay for our six school psychologists to come in early and stay late in the school year. To finish up tasks they need to do to support our students. Ten skills trainers, nine at the elementary level and two middle school. Four elementary science, technology, engineering, and arts and math teachers. So those were our scene teachers. And materials and tech science for our scene teachers. Two elementary music teachers. So we now have a full-time music teacher at every one of our elementary schools. Thanks to adding these two additional positions. And actually, this was added back in the twenty-one twenty-two school year when we first started with our SIA grant. We pay for a high school health and wellness teacher and also materials for social emotional learning. This year for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, our allocation is a little over five point four million dollars. And right after my presentation. Northam will be sharing a resolution because this is higher than what we originally. Our original estimate was, so then we will have a resolution for the higher amount. In addition, SIA is part of the integrated programs. It has actually changed names a few times. It started out as Integrated Guidance, then it moved to Integrated Grants, and now it's called Integrated Programs. And the integrated programs that we participate in are the Student Investment Account, SIA, High School Success, Measure Ninety-eight. The Perkins Grant, which supports our CTE at the high school. And the Early Indicator and Intervention System. And we've also added that you'll see for this coming up for twenty-four twenty-five is the Early Literacy Grant. That is now also included in this. So this is one application that we do every biennium. So in the spring, we will be applying for the twenty-five twenty-seven biennium. So you'll be hearing a lot from me about what those next steps are going to be as we get further into the school year. For twenty-three twenty-four, we are required a report. We have to do a report expenditures. And do three overall reflection narrative questions throughout the school year. So every quarter. I have to report on the expenditures for all of these grants. Answer overall reflection narrative questions, report on our progress monitors. Are we moving forward on what we said we were going to do? And then all of this informs our overall progress and annual report. And then for this report, there's two narrative questions. The requirements from the state are these. Narrative questions are shared out in the board meetings, so you're able to see them. They're also on the website. And then I have to send into ODE the link on our website to show that we did post this on the website. As well as the link to our send in our board minutes to show that we had this discussion at this meeting. Not going to read you the whole entire, I shared all of it with you, but those annual report narratives are. And but we have to talk about one outcome where we've seen progress in implementation. I think especially around our CTE programs, our P our PK twenty coordinator being added. And the partnerships we have in our community, our ninth grade on track, ninth grade smaller learning communities. All of the work we've done in those areas are the pieces of progress that I shared out with ODE. The second question is where we've seen challenges or barriers to implementation. And it continued, we continue to do work around supporting challenging behaviors. For our students, expanding our behavior team at the district level, adding the skills trainers and the assistance in the schools. MTSS committee meetings continue and we're just working on training to for staff. And during that doesn't remove them during instructional time because that can be a barrier. And that is the report. Any questions?
There doesn't seem to be any. Thank you, Michelle. Now, as Michelle stated, that's a perfect segue into item number four, Resolution twenty-four twenty-five ten, accepting and appropriating anticipated. Increase in student investment account grants, funds. Cheryl, you want to kind of take that away?
Sure. I'm in your packet. We have Resolution twenty-four twenty-five ten. And that resolution increases our appropriation or our spending authority. Oregon budget law allows that when you receive an unanticipated grant, unanticipated at the time of the budget. Or a large increase that we did not budget for. This this appropriation resolution will allow the district to spend the funds as Michelle. I'll call line just for you.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four twenty-five ten.
Is that two motions or are we just doing the motion for the resolution?
Just a motion for the resolution.
Okay, I'll motion to approve Resolution twenty-four twenty-five ten.
Is there a second? Great. Any discussion? Questions? Okay, all those in favor? All opposed? What a wonderful problem to have. Kind of like that. Now, we also have an approval of the CMGC contractor for the RHS VOTEC East VOTEC East Building Seismic Renovation. Cheryl, do you want to talk about that briefly?
I do. As you guys know, the district has been awarded a seismic rehabilitation grant. For the east building of the RHS VOTEC or CTE building. We did publish for a contractor on the Oregon buyer's website using the CMGC method of procurement. And we had four contractors attend our walkthrough and. Or three. It's three. Three contractors attend our mandatory pre-bid walkthrough and only one submitted a proposal. SNB James. And you guys know we worked very successfully with SNB on many projects in the past. So we were glad to see that they submitted a proposal. The details are.
Entertain a motion to approve SNB James Construction as Contractor and to direct a business office to negotiate a contract for the RHS VOTEC East Building.
I'd move for the approval of the CMGC contract for the VOTEC building with SB James.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next agenda item is to approve photocopier and related services contract extension. Which you had a chance to review in your in your packet, pages sixty-two to seventy-three. So we received purchasing supervisor Denny Austin's memo to you requesting an extension of the district's agreement with Pacific Office Automation. Through a second five-year term expiring April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-nine. The extension would upgrade all copiers to current models with all service supplies and usage fees remaining unchanged. The monthly lease rate would change from three thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars per month. To four thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars per month, an overall increase of sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars during the four-year term. Current machines have reached or now exceed recommended equipment service life. I would entertain a motion to approve this proposal to extend the photocopier and related services contract extension. As recommended by our purchasing supervisor. Motion?
Well, that's a mouthful. Hopefully I don't say photocopier. A motion to approve. The proposal to extend the photocopier and related services contract extension as recommended by our purchasing supervisor.
Do we have a second? Okay, now do you have any questions, Denny?
I have a question. Why is it a contract extension or versus a new contract? So it it will be a new contract. It will be a new lease for the copiers. But all of the service supplies. The general programming of the devices are all covered under the prior agreement. So. We will have all new equipment and the change in lease fee is that three hundred dollars increase. So that was the only change. And this morning I received a notice from. Department of Administrative Services that the state of Oregon just extended their. Sharp copier agreement and added Pacific Office Automation to their buyer's guide for this region. So.
Good, good. Any other questions?
It says current machines have reached or now exceeded recommended equipment. By how much or what? What does it mean by they've reached their? They exceeded recommended service life?
So printers and copiers have a recommended service life. And as they reach that limit, there start to be more breakdowns. More minor repairs become major repairs. And so once they've gotten to their end of life, they they need to be replaced. These sharp copiers have been very. These sharp copiers have been very reliable. The last fleet of copiers we had were all Conicum and all this. So early in the the fourth year of the lease, we started having major failures. So we actually had to have the vendor provide us with some replacement copiers to complete the lease. The sharp copiers, we've only been seeing just recently some issues that needed major repairs. So the, there's an industry standard and it's generally around several million copies. On the bigger format machines. So some of our machines have gone past three million images.
How many copiers do we have in our district?
We have forty six currently.
Any other questions?
Are we going to get forty six new ones?
Forty six brand new state of the art machines.
And how long is the next contract for?
It'll be for four years.
Five years?
It'll be for four, yeah. The extension for Pacific Office that Portland Public Schools signed was a five-year extension. Ours is only a four-year to coincide with the terms of lease.
So is there only one vendor that we go to?
In this instance, it was the vendor that we have presently that was providing sharp copiers. So the state uses the same Pacific Office service. And Portland Public Schools also uses them. There are many copier manufacturers in the United States, so.
This includes all the ink and maintenance and everything?
All ink maintenance. The only item that is not included is paper. And paper runs us about a half set.
Oh, I mean, every time we do one of these things like, you know, a calculator and try to do, you know, five, fifty two hundred dollars. Over the lifetime of a printer is not much more than the cost if we bought, it might be cheaper than if we bought the things outright ourselves. So I think this is a smoking deal for once in a gray while. I'm very excited. Smoking deal.
It works out to be about five to ten pages per student per day for the term of the lease.
On that note, all in favor?
I have.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much, Denny. Now we have item number seven, District Director Report, Teaching and Learning, College and Career Work. We have Director Jill Lever and Brett Stranbacher.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to share what's been going on in teaching and learning. And I hope you're going to be just as excited about teaching and learning. And so, of course, the children are at the center of the work we do and everything we do from the. From what's happening in the classroom with the teachers, to administrators, to the system, curriculum, programs, assessments, everything is about our children. And of course, the strategic plan is centered to that. And you've heard that from our principals today and I think at every presentation about the importance of keeping that at the center of our work. Each student is important to us and we want to ensure that each of our students receives that care, support and instruction to be as successful as they can be. This year, our focus again is in literacy, math and path to graduation. You've heard that from each of the principals as well on the reports and the work that's happening in all of the schools. We're prioritizing grade level standards and we heard Miss Off talk about that today, about the importance of those grade level standards. We're also ensuring that reading and writing is happening every day in every classroom. And another focus for us across our five D work is assessment for learning. So you'll hear those themes and it's a K twelve theme in the work that we're doing across all classrooms. Our department is very diverse and so I'd like to take just a second to talk through all the things that happen within the Department of Teaching and Learning. So first of all, we support all curricular areas, math, English Language Arts, science, health, music. Physical education, social studies, every curricular program happening is supported through our department. We also support the pre-kindergarten program and we have pre-kindergarten programs at Eastwood, Winchester and Green. And they're part of our department, our department work. We have a talented and gifted program and that is run through our department as well. And Christie Hires is the teacher who supports that program in all of our schools. So every school from elementary, middle and high school has a talented and gifted program that supports our students. Who need to be challenged because we want every one of our students challenged at their appropriate level. We also have an Indian education program and Christie, along with Tim, supports the work for Indian education students. This includes lessons that are taught in the classroom as well as the fifty five students that are Native American. And will offer support for them as well. We have a new teacher program. So when new teachers come into our district, we have around twenty of them. We want to ensure that that first and second year is pivotal in their success. And we want to ensure that they feel supported, they have someone to go to, they can help problem solve, help them with classroom management and ensure they stay with us. And this year we saw a reduction in the number of new teachers that we had as we're ensuring that our teachers are staying. As we train them, it's important that they stay with us. We have a social emotional learning coordinator and you heard Michelle talk about that through the SIA grant. And she works with all the schools, training staff around the social and emotional needs of our students. The STEAM team, again, that was something that Michelle talked about. They work with all of our elementary schools, including R V S and getting that excitement around science for all of our students. We also support the multi-tiered system of supports and the P twenty college and career program. And Brett's going to share a little bit more about the P twenty in a moment. So how do we do all of that work? Because that's a lot that's going on. So first of all, we do provide professional learning to all administrators, classroom teachers, specialists, instructional assistants in the instructional areas. This year alone already, we've provided over a hundred different meetings, professional learning, PLCs, opportunities to collaborate. Across our district. And so a hundred, just through our, over a hundred, just through our department. We facilitate the curriculum material adoption. So last year we adopted science K twelve. This year we're working on health and K five reading. And so we go through a process of ensuring that we create a position paper about what we believe around instruction in that area. And we'll bring together teachers and administrators to review programs that are approved through ODE. And our teachers will pilot them and collectively, we provide input to bring to the board around programs that we wish to be adopted. After that, we have support curriculum implementation instructional framework. So we use the five D instructional framework. We also support that adoption. So the rollout of a curriculum is really important those first couple of years. To make sure that all the teachers have the materials and that they feel equipped to roll out that new program. We support assessment, administration, reports and the use of the data. Director Kuwak asked about that formative assessments and Miss Off shared a couple of the formative assessments that we use in our district. And we have a long list of those and we'll bore you with all of them. But we have a lot of different ways that we assess our students' growth over time and use that to adjust our instruction. We have side-by-side mentoring and coaching for our teachers and our administrators. We have monthly building, learning walkthroughs with administrators. And so, for example, Ms. Endicott will meet with a principal and they'll walk through classrooms and talk about ELA implementation. They'll discuss what's working, what they're working on in the building and she provides support in that area. Mr. Ventia does that in math and then Mr. Weber does that in science. And I also am there to help support the principals. And so monthly we meet with all of them in their buildings. And discuss the work they're doing and how we can help support that. We facilitate teacher leader and curricular teams and we also are available support whatever other teaching and learning needs that may arise. And some of those teaching and learning teacher leader teams are listed there. And you also heard in today in the principal report, they talked about their teacher leaders, the importance of that. So we use a teacher leader model where they will, teachers will come in with their administrators. We work with them to become leaders and share that information within their building. And grow the classroom teachers' instruction through their leadership. So there's just a variety of different teams that we support. And we're so thankful for our administrators and our teacher leaders that share in this work. Okay, and then I just want to talk briefly about the five D work that we're doing in the buildings. And this year, based on some of the feedback that we got from our teachers and our administrators. We want to get, we want, they were asked to get into different levels. So most of the time we stay within our level. Secondary teachers will be in secondary classrooms and elementary in elementary classrooms. But this year, they decided that they wanted to see what it looked like K twelve. And the really wonderful thing about our instructional framework is it doesn't matter if you're in pre-K or K. Or you're in a senior advanced class, good instruction is good instruction. We look for purpose, we look for engagement, we gather data on the student's performance. We create a climate where they can feel safe to learn and that happens no matter what grade level you're at. So it's been really fun to see high school come down into elementary. They're in elementary classrooms, they see how instructions occurring there. And they're seeing that connection between what's being taught in the second grade classroom and what that looks like in high school. When we're talking about cross-cutting concepts in science or we're talking about habit activators in math, it's the same language no matter what grade. So it's been great for our teachers and our leaders to see this connection. And understanding that through line all the way from kindergarten through graduation. So it's been a great thing for our teachers and we see some head nods as I think we're learning a lot through that process. So we're enjoying that. Lastly, so two slides, Michelle. The last slide I wanted to talk about is the P twenty career pathway work. And this is a new position that the board has supported this year and it's been phenomenal. How, or last year, I guess, was the first year, phenomenal how quickly the work has gotten done and the results that we're seeing from that. And so I want to thank Brett for his work that he's enabled to support both the high school and UCC. And the integration of our programs between the two places. And so Brett's going to share just a little bit about that work. Brett?
Thank you. Good evening. And thank you for this opportunity to share what Dr. Weber just introduced, the work and the progress of the P twenty partnership. And honestly, the investment that all of you have made in all of our students' most successful futures. I'm very proud of this work. I'm very happy and proud of the impact that we're immediately having on our students and their futures. The purpose of the P twenty program is focused on exactly that. Every one of our students' most successful futures and ensuring that every student has a pathway to a career. In an in-demand, high-wage field after graduation. To accomplish this, we're working hard to align the coursework and experiences that our students are having in high school. Create opportunities for dual credit and partnered programs that lead directly to a degree. Or a professional certificate while in high school or very soon afterwards. Accelerating those pathways to not only the professional certificate or degree, but also to that career. Reviewing our first year's work within the P twenty partnership. We're able to accelerate the expansion of additional strategic dual course offerings last year. And as such, I'm proud to share the immediate impact that this program and we have all had for students. And the benefits that they are realizing. If I can draw your attention to the slide in your packet or there on the TVs. On the last row, school year two thousand twenty three, twenty four, last year. This chart represents the last six years, but I want to focus on last year. Last year, we had three hundred and six individual students that took at least one dual credit course last year. But that next column over, the number of classes taken, you can see is much higher. Eleven hundred and ninety-three courses taken, that means that those three hundred and six students took multiple courses across last year. Earning a total of four thousand four hundred, excuse me, four thousand forty-four credits. Across last school year. That, and I want to talk about these courses. Every one of those courses is very purposeful and transferable. That means that they're aligned directly to a degree or a professional certificate. It is not just, our students aren't taking dual credit or college credit for the sake of college credit any longer. These are very strategically and purposefully aligned. The last column, the number of teachers. We have more teachers credentialed and articulated for dual credit with UCC than ever before in history. Very proud of that number. I'm very proud of Roseburg High School staff. Very proud of UCC faculty for taking on these challenges with open arms. Working through these challenges, collaborating together to work through and to be able to offer these programs and courses. But the real number there, the fifth column over, tuition saved. Last year, our dual credit in this partnership saved our families, our students. Six, over six hundred thousand dollars in tuition and fees. And ultimately, we know that that is, can lead to that debt. That hits every student to, you know, as soon as they graduate. That is a very, very significant number in savings to our students and their futures. Looking at next year, I'm looking forward to reviewing these numbers. Looking at the same measures, we expect these numbers to be even greater, much, much greater than they are now. And here's why. Looking upon the work that we planned last year and what we've integrated this year already. This year, we've built upon the solid foundation of CTE programs and dual credit courses and core subject areas at Roseburg High School. And have integrated three additional CTE pathways or programs, including the certificate pathways. For emergency medical technician, lobotomy, as well as a pathway into fire science. Where students are taking their first year, first three courses in that degree field, allowing them to accelerate into that pathway. Additionally, we have been able to add twenty articulations, twenty courses. Articulated for dual credit, again, that are very purposeful and transferable at UCC. That our students are now enrolled or will soon be, as Ms. Ekman pointed to earlier, will be enrolling very soon into those courses. So we're very excited, we're very happy for these opportunities for our students. And most of all, their futures. But in closing, I want to go back to that six hundred thousand dollar plus figure. That's what our students are realizing, that cost savings to them. But when we expand that out further, that is compounded to the impact on our community. This, allowing our students to obtain these certificates, these degrees at a much faster rate. And we're not lowering the bar. Our students are held to the same standards, meeting the same outcomes, the same assessments. That the students taking the courses out at UCC are. But these opportunities accelerating our students into careers right here at home in our community. That figure is compounded. It is a fractional amount of the overall figure that our community will realize from our programs. And like I said, the results of this year, I look forward to being able to share those figures using these same metrics. Thank you again for your investment in every one of our students. And this is, you heard Mr. Endicott earlier talking about him sharing these career pathways and this. Clear down to the kindergarten level. This is. Invaluable investment that you all have made into our community and the lives of our, and the futures of our kids. Thank you very much.
So much good news. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the directors?
Can I just mention something real quick? I thank you, Brett. Brett's been instrumental. And so has Jill and others on this. I will just say, I think, so a couple, one thing just to clarify, Brett is in a co-funded position actually with the college, which is a good clarification. And so that's, that's great. This, so two things here. This arguably is one of the most important and exciting endeavors in the community. You know, in the past, we have developed talent in the community with our students, we've invested in them. And then we've actually at times fundraised to have them leave. We've scholarship them to leave. And this is the nexus of what's happening here is really has a potential to dramatically change. The trajectory of the community in a real enhance the community positive way. I'm asked sometimes from people across the state about what's happening in Roseburg. People are excited about watching what's happening. To me, this is a really good example of an equation that to me is pretty simple. If you can increase access for students. If you can increase opportunities for students. If you can increase their choice and if you can increase rigor. You can do those four things, you'll see students rise to the occasion. You have to increase rigor. The only, that's the way students will find value in it. And I think this is a good example, there are many, but this is a good example of increasing opportunity for kids, increasing access. Increase everybody to choose and also making sure it's rigorous. So I appreciate that and I think it's a good example of many things. Um, so I appreciate that. And I think it's a good example. Many things happen across the district. We should be proud of.
And now, um, Jared, would you talk about the student health survey, please?
Indeed. Okay, um. So.
Here we go. All right. I want to talk for a few minutes, um, tonight about the student health survey. Um, I've got some bullet points here. For you, and then we can open this up for a discussion. Um, the student health survey was developed in two thousand twenty by the Oregon Health Authority. And is currently implemented through the Department of Education. Uh, it's important to note that prior to this school year, participation in the student health survey was voluntary. And we as a district and myself as a superintendent effectively, um, made an effort not to participate in the student health survey. Um, in part to maximize the time with our students that we need around our academic areas. Additionally, um, personally and professionally, um, I felt that some of the survey questions were not age appropriate for every child. Nor did I feel like the survey was relevant, um, to how many of the questions weren't relevant to how we care. Um, and serve our students. Um, is a, is a note here, we do value student input and we, um, have yearly, um. Offered a, a student survey through I R E with our students, and that's an actionable survey that we, we can get information from. Um, for the first time, um, the survey distribution is now required by law to be distributed to families. And that was part of a House bill, House Bill. Twenty-six fifty-six that was enacted by the Oregon, uh, legislature. It's important to note that the school district did not create the survey. It doesn't have control over the questions asked. Um, the survey is optional. Um, in the statute, there are a couple of, um. Uh, key provisions in the statute. It does say that it needs to be offered to students. Um, parents need to have a chance to preview the survey. Um, it does, is clear that parents have, uh, is their choice. If they want their students to take it, it's also a choice of students if they want to take it. Also says that, that can, you can take parts of the survey. It's not a and all. It's not either take the whole thing or. Um, so, um, we, we do, I just want to say, we do absolutely value student voice. We also value family partnerships. Um, the, the students and gar- or the parents and guardians have a chance to review the survey, the survey questions. It's offered for students in grades six, eight, and eleven. In advance, um, of the survey window, which is December second through the thirteenth. Um, and, um, so, so they can facilitate the participation, um, of the, of, of their, um, children and the decision to make that. Um, to, to participate in the survey. So that's currently where the survey is. I want to give you kind of an o- overview of where this is at. I've sent this survey for your review to take a look at. But a couple, uh, again, clarifications, it, it was developed by. The health authority and it's being implemented through the Department of Education. It is now in, uh, law that it must be, um. It must be given, the opportunity must be given. So, um, happy to host any questions about the student health survey.
I did review, um, I thought a lot. Some of the questions were things that we already know. Much of that information they're asking is information that we already have. But I was, um. I was truly, um, concerned with the age appropriateness of some of the questions. And that parents definitely need to have the call on this.
So it was last week that we saw in our pre-meeting, I believe, or the week before. I was taken back by some of these questions. My kids who are much older now, I would have never allowed them to have taken this class, this survey. You know, we're advocates for kids on this board, but we're also advocates for our parents. And, um. If it was up to me, I'd take the damn thing and throw it in the trash can. Um, then I spent almost a million dollars on this. Some third party. And we can use that million dollars throughout the state for maybe some more summer school stuff this past summer. So, um. This is the type of stuff that comes out. That really jacks parents up. It's just, it's ridiculous. I don't know who thinks of these. These questions. I mean. Sure, you're going to get an opportunity to see what we're talking about, but it's ridiculous. So anyway, I am absolutely opposed to this survey.
Madam Chair. I would like to, uh, propose a motion for consideration and allow the discussion to continue.
Okay, if we get a second, yes?
Second.
Uh, I. I move to direct the district to implement O R S three twenty-nine oh seven eight, which is the statute which this bill created. Uh, it's entitled informational surveys, also known as the student health survey. I moved to direct this district to implement this through parent notification and choice to participate. Further, the district should provide for responses to be sent directly to the O H A or O D E, whichever is appropriate. And within a specified deadline. And surveys are not. Um, surveys are not, and surveys not received from notification and the, this notification review process. Will serve as notice to us of the parent or child declining to participate.
Sorry for the preemptive second. I will now second, and I will now start discussion. Um. I've had some communication that there are legislators and there are school boards across the state. That have not read through this survey. And rubber stamped it already. Um. I'd like to commit, I'd like to take a moment to commend Director Cubic. And Superintendent Corden for addressing this with the motion, uh, before this was rubber stamped and implemented in our school district. Um. I would like to say for the record that I am personally adamantly opposed to our students being exposed to this survey. In the Roseburg School District. And I would like to state that the hundreds of thousands of dollars spent to the consultant for the creation of the survey, survey was an egregious waste. Of taxpayer monies for the state. Uh, spending almost a million dollars on the creation of this survey, in my opinion. Is a travesty.
Do we have any more comments? Question?
Um, Madam Chair. I just think there are some very sensitive issues in this survey. It's not a focus that if the education instruction that our quality staff is doing. Um, we need to fully meet the spirit of the statute. So we need to find a way to do that, but make that not a district survey. And we need to assure that it engages parents and protects family values. And that the family can provide care, support, and instruction on this survey, not our faculty. And that potentially controversial topics could come from this. That would be disruptive to public education and our educational goals. And then therefore I would encourage all on the board to approve this motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, um, I do believe that the, um. Providing it to the parents and their own, in their own home. They, uh, are given the opportunity to even administer the survey to their own children. And there's, there's some helpful links of information if there may be some issues that the child is. Dealing with that the parent might want to know. Um, but that's certainly something that they should be able to choose to just, um, access that or not. And so, uh, we also, I also do not believe that this is, uh, something that our district, um. We're making it available, but it's not something that we're promoting.
Is there any more discussion? If not, we will vote on this. All in favor? Okay, I, all opposed? Okay. Um, the motion carries. Thank you very much for your work on this. Now we will move on to the superintendent report with Jared.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, appreciate the discussion there duly noted on the motion. Thank you. Um, gosh, we have great kids. Here's this picture of like our, some of our lovely kids. They're fantastic. Um, you heard about some of these kids tonight. I want to talk for a few minutes about, um, our kids and our staff and our community. Um, I will often say there's hundreds of things. In between our meetings I could bring forward to the board as examples and to the community of things we should be proud of in this community. I want to talk just about a few of them tonight. Um. I let the board know a couple of weeks ago, we had a, um. Were informed by D P H N about, uh, portosis or whooping cough, uh, incidents. Um, and we, we're kind of working through a process with that of, uh, uh, pretty restrictive for some families that are, need to be, your students are out for twenty-one days and, and there were some. It's, it's a challenging thing for those kids. And I just, and also for staff, and I just want to thank our staff and our families. There were a lot of ways this could have been handled. People could have, um, figured out what not to do or why do I need to do this? And it's just not the way it happens in our district. Our staff rallied around students. Um, this didn't become a political issue about vaccinations. It became how do we help support students who are unfortunately disadvantaged by not being able to attend school? Even when many of our kids would like to attend school, and it's just something we need to work, we've been working with, with our county health folks. But I just want to say thank you to our staff and families, our students as well, who just understood this is the situation. Instead of, you know, kind of talking about why it sucks, quite frankly, for kids. It's like, what can we do? Well, what we can do is rally around to make sure in this situation, we come together for, for our students. And so, um. A huge shout out to our staff and families and kids who were impacted by this and, and their attitudes. We've had a number of, um. Volunteers, um. Chair, um, Minor talked tonight about like gifts to the district and those come oftentimes in a monetary way, but they sometimes and often come in ways of support. Uh, Lions Club, for example, one of a hundred examples I could give you, taking time to help. Make sure students have access by being able to see, providing, uh, resources around vision screening. Um, we had a community member, Garrett Hannah, support, uh, you know, one of our students right now. She's one of about thirteen or fourteen of her students. Um, is selected as a semifinalist for a Coca-Cola Scholars. And then if you hadn't had a chance to see in this video on social media, it's pretty cool. Um, end of the football season, we had our, our team manager, Caleb. Let me see Caleb there is in a wheelchair and, uh, Joe Lane in Fremont play end of the year together. And kind of this really special tribute, if you hadn't seen it. They, um, kind of finished her season by helping Caleb in his, uh, wheelchair. Score kind of like a winning touchdown, right? It's fifty yard touchdown. Just an example of how incredible our kids are and our staff are. We talk about being focused on people's care and support instruction. It's very, very evident. In the actions of our staff and our students and our community. I'm going to talk just for a minute about honoring veterans. This is an important, um, aspect of our community, our kind of social, um, fabric of our community. Our support of our veterans. That's a connection we can make with our community. We understand without veterans, we wouldn't have a chance to have public education. Nor be able to oftentimes, um. Have the opportunities that we, that we deserve and can see in the future. It's because of the veterans who have dedicated their life for the freedom of our, of our country. And it's neat to see. Our students and our school district rally around that. Um, we had our students at the Veterans Day Parade downtown. We've hosted veterans to celebrate them at schools, including Green and R V S. And as you walked, if you had a chance to walk around. This week to kind of see the signs of respect around what are, how our community is rallying around supporting. Our veterans and also their cause of freedom. That's pretty exciting in our community. I'm grateful to live in a community that doesn't, isn't bashful about, um. Our, uh, love of our country and also our veterans. Uh, finally, tonight, um, I just want to talk about one of our own. Um, that's Cheryl Northam. She asked me not to really do this tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and do it anyway. Um, so, um, I just want to, uh, spend just a second to talk about, you know, how appreciative I am. Uh, of Cheryl's service to our school district. Um. She's a fierce advocate for our kids and our staff and people. If you don't know Cheryl, you probably, you may not see that. But she has served our district for sixteen years. Um, is, is budgets and complications with budgets and funding have gone up and down. Cheryl's really been a kind of a steady force for us to make sure that we are in a good position to support children and community and our staff. Uh, she asked me not to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. Um, if we think about the tens of millions of dollars that we've. Had an opportunity to secure through grants. That really has been Cheryl, who has spearheaded our seismic grants. Um, we have a Renew America Schools grant that was an absolute pain to apply for. It's even a pain when you get it. And that's, um, Cheryl's kind of helps us through that process of making sure that this one is for, um. Joe Lane and Eastwood for, uh, each needed HVAC upgrades. Um. But is the, we've seen questions around, I mean, it is, is you watch the news, you see school districts that all of a sudden are out of money. Mid-year with layoffs, furlough days, um, all of the implications of that. It's really been, um, a pleasure to work with Cheryl. Cheryl, um, will be, still be here. She reminds me, she's four and a half miles away. She's committed a long term to the district of support. But this will be her last year as our Director of Finance Operations. Um, and so, um, just want to, uh, express gratitude for Cheryl and let the board know that we. Um, because of this notification, and I appreciate, uh, Cheryl letting us know ahead of time, puts us in a position to make sure we post. And advertise and hire the best person to continue this momentum. Uh, we will post this position next week, once I've approved the final posting. Uh, which we expect that to be posted next week, and we will go through, uh. Very thorough screening process, an interview process, and we will find a candidate that can continue that legacy. Um, this is a unique position because it will be posted as it currently is, which is Director of Finance and Operations. So effectively. A CFO and a COO position in district our size. That's a complicated position, and I'm confident that we'll hire someone. That can continue the momentum that Cheryl has provided and the stability she's provided for us. And that is my report tonight. Happy to answer any questions. I think so. She said, as long as they don't clap for me, you can do this, is what she actually said. So, thank you, word.
Count it. I, that was good. Um. So, uh, thank you so much for your report. Um, do we have, uh, reports from our directors? We'll just start with you, Andrew.
Uh, I'd just like to say thanks to Principal Ott and Endicott for those reports. It's nice to see. The, the goals from last year that we were all moving around and, and see the growth. Um, and see you guys have passion for your jobs and to be successful in your jobs i- is awesome to see. Um, and it's also awesome to see everybody here at the table, all, all of us working together as, as a unit. Um, I've been truly blessed over the past three and a half years now to be a part of this. Uh, it's been special. It is special. I think we have a great thing. We have a great community. Um, and I think that we're, have a bright future and continuing on the path we're on.
Director Leoni? Director Hammerson?
Yeah, I also wanted to mention something about the, uh, Endicott's report. That, that six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That's nothing. Once the interest starts rolling in when you got student loan payments. So that's, I mean, that really is a huge impact on the student's future. Um, so I appreciated that. And also, um. I'm going to miss Cheryl. I'm sad. I don't know if we can replace Cheryl, but I know we'll do the best that we can.
Your Crimmits, would you like to say anything? Hear you.
Not good with, can you hear me now?
Not good with it. Can you hear me now? Oh, never mind. Nothing.
We can hear you, Anne.
Oh, you can. Okay. Just wanted to thank, uh, Nikki Ott for, Op for, um, hosting, uh, the meeting and I sure wanted to be there, but, um, I just can see the enthusiasm in her, in her, um, her reporting to us, and I can see that it's going places and it's being contagious. And, uh, I think the plans that she has, that she laid out are, are really doable. They're, you know, they're specific and they're doable. And I just, um, really appreciated that. And then, uh, yes, Cheryl, wow, that's a, you're pretty much irreplaceable in, in many ways. But, um, we're hope you have a great retirement. You deserve it.
Um, Director Cotton?
I will miss Cheryl too. Uh, but I do feel sorry for Jay. I'm kind of in the same boat. My wife is retiring at the end of December. I don't know how this is going to work. But that's, it's, we're going to find out very quickly, but, um, Cheryl is just a really special person. And, uh, but we have lots of really special people in this room, in this district, but, um, she'll be around. You know, I hope for a while longer. So I do want to thank Joseph Lane for hosting. Um, we were a little rushed last, it was the last day of school and, uh, and it, so I was glad we were able to kind of get together and, and do, and this is my old stomping grounds. It's kind of fun to come back to, to Joe Lane. Uh, I hope some of you got to go to the band, one of their final performance at the football field. Um, wasn't it election night? Yeah, I got Tuesday night, yeah. So that was entertaining, but, um, it was nice to see that. It, it was nice to see all the good things going on. And I, I want to put a plug in. I think extracurricular activities are really important in this district. And, um, I don't, I don't want it to go unrecognize that, you know, the, the football team had a really good, had a good season. And I think they're on, around a really great path. So I was glad to see that. So anyway, thank you Nikki for hosting us.
Director Cubic?
I have two just really brief reports. Um, I was in visiting the administration office on the sixteenth of October and, uh, the audit was going on. And, um, they, just so happened that the auditors wanted to speak with the budget or board member, and I happened to be there. Uh, so I was interviewed by the auditor. We talked about federal funds. We talked about the quality of our financial manager, which was superior. Uh, and, um, we talked about governor, the importance of government accounting standards, basic foundation for operation of our schools. And then, um, we, uh, they asked me questions about how responsible our budgeting management was. And I listed off about ten things that I thought were very responsible, all that I could credit to our superintendent, this board and our financial director. And, um, I think, um, I answered their questions. And, uh, I don't know if that will be part of the final budget report or not, but I did represent the board in that interview. The second thing I wanted to do was, last week I went to Roseburg High because I have some vintage antique hats that you can't wear anymore that are from Roseburg High. Um, because the logos are not the right ones. And so, um, I was there and I wanted to buy a hat and the shop was closed. And one of our administrators came out and said, here, I'll give you this hat. It was size jumbo. And, uh, it had a football on it and I didn't want the football one, but I wanted, you know? And so they said, come back Tuesday. I went back Tuesday and there were like eight hats on the counter. And they said, which one would you like? I have a new Roseburg High, represent our school and our district hat, and I wear it with pride.
Um, so, um, I love your enthusiasm. Uh, I too am going to miss Cheryl, um, but I'll cry later. So, um, I don't, not make a spectacle of me and you both. Um, but I did want to, I know it's getting late, but I wanted to share something. So, um, our students are really amazing and classy. So my husband and I went to the senior night girls volleyball game. And a senior night and all of the seniors were getting flowers and stuff. Well, they took over, it was Willamette High School, which is my alma mater. I graduated from Willamette in Eugene. Um, they took bouquets to all the seniors and they were beautiful. They weren't, and it was in their school colors, right? So my husband and I were just really in awe and they were surprised. But then they took it a step further when they all, the teams lined up and they would announce the player. Our team took a rose and ran across the court underneath the net and handed it to a Willamette player. And they were just, and then they kept doing it with each name of, a flower was taken to the other team. And the, the faces of those Willamette players were just amazing because they were like, you know, they couldn't believe it, you know? And I just thought, you know what? And my husband was in tears because he thought that was really super cool, but, um, how classy is that? And then of course we warmed them, which that's, but, but I'm just saying, you know, we've got great kids and stuff like that is just priceless. So, okay, that being said, um, our next meeting is December eleventh. And it will be a board meeting and executive session at Green Elementary. Um, so all regular business is, has now concluded. Barring no objections, the regular meeting is adjourned. The board will reconvene in an executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six zero two E and J. So thank you so much for coming. We appreciate you and, uh, hope you have a great evening.